Good evening and welcome to Carnegie Town Hall. I'll call to order this regular meeting of the Sioux Falls City Planning Commission. We're going to start as we have for the last almost two years or so and give some recognition to a project that has gone above and beyond. And today Commissioner Sean Urban is going to give us that project.
Thank you, Nick. Aspen Heights is located in the northwest corner of Madison Street and Marion Road. It features beautiful views of rolling hills. On the entrance from North Holbrook Avenue, single-family homes line the west side of the street and two-story townhomes to the east. The intimate development of single-story townhomes line private streets with access to private entrances and two-car garages. With the rear of the townhomes facing each other, patios and green space provide a sense of community amongst the neighbors. A playground and picnic shelter create a larger amenity in the community. The adjacent intersection is zoned for commercial and the office development making it walkable for the neighbors when retail and personal services are constructed. The 800-student McGovern Middle School is located in the north of Aspen Heights, making it convenient location for young families. This is a great example of the types of multi-use kind of developments that this commission loves to see. Thank you.
Thank you, Sean. Let's give a round of applause to the Aspen Heights. And with that, we'll move on to approving the consent and the regular agendas. The consent agenda items are the first eight on our agenda, and they'll be approved all in one motion unless there are any objections. I understand number five, we would like to pull to the regular agenda. Did anybody from the audience wish to have any of the other consent agenda items moved to the regular agenda? Any commission members wish to move any consent agenda items to the regular? If not, I'll look for commission action.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Would somebody like to amend it to move item five to the regular?
So moved.
Have a motion.
A second.
And a second. So all in favor of the amendment to move item five to the regular agenda, please say yes.
Yes.
All opposed, same side. Now we have the main motion of the consent agenda. All in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
All opposed, same side. The consent agenda has been approved. If you were here for one of those items, you're free to go home. Otherwise, you can sure stay here. Now, can we have a motion to approve the regular agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
All opposed, same side. The regular agenda has been approved.
Now, do I read the consent agenda items?
Well, you can read number five.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, I'm going to excuse myself for item number five.
Thanks, Kenny.
Item number five is 2055-2014 rezone from the RS Single Family Residential Suburban District to the RA1 Apartment Residential Low Density District for Allowed Forms located at 1624 South Doodler Drive.
Jason Bieber, representing Planning and Building Services with the city of Sioux Falls. This is an application by Eric Willardson. The purpose of it is to eliminate the split zoning on a parcel and construct a future parking lot for the existing apartment complex located to the south. It is located at 1624 South Doodler Drive, which is northwest of the East 26th Street and South Sycamore Avenue intersection. The applicant is proposing to rezone roughly .27 acres. The existing parcel is being utilized as a tennis court for the residents of the apartment complex to the south. This tennis court is in disrepair, as you can see from the specific aerial, and so the applicant would like to remove that particular tennis court and construct a parking lot for some of the apartment complexes to the south. The proposed zoning does meet the Shakes Sioux Falls Comprehensive Plan. Further, the split zoning on this parcel will be eliminated, and it will now completely be zoned RA1. Further, the parcel contains a tennis court that is currently being utilized by the apartment complex to the south. And finally, a Level A buffer yard will be required on the north side of this parcel adjacent to the existing single-family residential homes. This buffer yard includes a 10-foot setback and a 2-foot berm or 4-foot fence with several units of landscaping. And because this subject application is consistent with the Shakes Sioux Falls Comprehensive Plan, staff does recommend approval of this rezoning. And I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thanks, Jason. Are there any questions for Jason?
Mr. Chair, just for clarification, Jason, this is only a parking lot that's being added? I mean, they're just taking down the tennis courts and putting a parking lot there, is that correct? They're not adding?
The rezoning request is for the parking lot. If you go back to the site plan, they are proposing to add another apartment complex. However, that is located on a parcel that's already zoned RA1, so they are allowed to go ahead and do that. The only portion that they're adding that's affected by this rezoning is about the north, 10 feet of that parking lot.
Okay, thanks.
And there's no additional access granted onto Doodler, is that right, as a result of this, or will there be?
They're proposing another access onto Doodler off of that proposed parking lot, which will obviously need to be approved by engineering at the time that they pull their permit for the parking lot.
Okay.
Any other questions for Jason? Thank you. Is the applicant here?
Good evening. Eric Willardson, Willardson Land Engineering, 902 South Cleveland, here tonight on behalf of the applicant. I guess, as Jason said, I see this kind of as a housekeeping item. Apparently, at some point when this property was rezoned, there was a portion of one lot, that small .25 acres, that was left single-family. And just want to clean this up and rezone the entire parcel to the RA1 zoning. The applicant is contemplating a future project to expand the apartments on the property. There is already existing access to Doodler Drive. This would essentially be a parking lot to supplement the existing parking. Like I said, it's the rest of the property is already zoned RA1. This essentially cleans that up. With that, I'd answer any questions you might have.
Thanks, Eric. Does anybody have any questions for him?
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else want to comment on item number five? Please come forward, state your name and address for the record.
We pass out stuff to you guys since I didn't know we could do the PowerPoint. Good evening. I'm Kyle Rullen, speaking on behalf of residents of Melanie Lane in Doodler Drive. I live at 1613 Doodler Drive. First off, I'd like to thank the Planning Commission for allowing the residents of Doodler Drive and Melanie Lane to express concerns associated with rezoning 1624 Doodler Drive parcel. We've been in the neighborhood since 1991, and a majority of the residents in that area have been there for a long time as well. Objections for the rezoning are based on the principles of being a good neighbor and abiding by the same ordinances as the rest of the neighborhood. I'd like to share a brief history of the neighborhood since 1991, since I've been there. The area in question, the tennis court, has been overgrown for nearly 10 years, just like, you know, the prior personnel we're talking about. One of our neighbors actually submitted a formal bid to property owners to clean the growth up and remove trees, brushes that were growing up in the fences in that area, but that offer was rejected. Same neighbor sent an email to the city asking for the mess to be cleaned up with no results until the last time when they requested for the mayor to come out and visit, then it was taken care of. You know, you might ask yourself, some of the questions, I guess, would be, you know, why are we talking about, you know, why did it take so long for us to ask for that? It came down to some of the things on there, which I don't have pictures of, but these are pictures of things in the neighborhood that we have to deal with on a constant basis, so it's about being a good neighbor. We had actually graffiti that was on Hy-Vee walls, which is actually locally, it's directly located to the east of the tennis courts. On the side of the tennis courts are also alcohol bottles and needles and other things along in this area. So we wanted to have this become a, it basically was a sanctuary for trouble and needed to be handled appropriately before children in the neighborhood or our older, you know, neighbors came upon a situation that could intensify. So as you see in some of the photos, and you can go through them at your leisure, but basically what I'm talking about is just some of the things about the photos where even the cleanup wasn't even fully completed on the tennis court itself. After nearly a year, the fence was not replaced. Wire from the tennis courts are laying around. Wire and metal objects as well, and the pipes and stuff. Kids from the complex play in this area, and tennis, walk their dogs in the area. So, I mean, I think the tenant, or the owner of the facility or the complex should be taking care of that stuff. When we moved to this neighborhood, the rental complex was peaceful, kept the traffic very, was at a minimal, because the gate that's in question that is currently there was shut. The current open, and that was a verbal agreement by us and the complex owner at that time. The current owner opened the north gate after purchasing the complex and left it open, even after requests for the neighborhood to keep it closed. Current cars do speed down Doodler Drive, and they have loud mufflers, louder music which can easily be heard through our walls and our houses, which are not real thick. One of the neighbors' property, who's actually present here today, was damaged a few years back when a tenant lost control of his car and ran into the retaining wall, his retaining wall. This was in the middle of the day while our kids were out playing in the yard and witnessed it. This is how we knew and how we found which person it was that damaged, ran into the retaining wall. We've had to call the city to report semi-trucks, long neck trailers, campers that are parked on our street for days at a time. As you see in some of the photos, cars parked on both sides of the street causing hazardous roads. These cars have been left on the streets for weeks at a time, just like some of the abandoned cars in the parking lots. Aesthetics, you've talked a little bit about the aesthetics and berms and what they're going to do. There is none right now, actually. There's a lack of landscaping, trees, berms, screening to minimize the negative effects of the complex. You know, what negative impact? As you can see in some of the photos, the trash dumpsters are overflowing, there's trailers in the parking lot, couches and goose-neck trailers that are sitting there, multiple trailers, boats, cars with flat tires, abandoned cars. The neighborhood's at the point of requesting speed bumps or signs for slowing down in the neighborhood for kids. So the question is, should this possibly rezone our neighborhood? To this answer, we think is no. Not until this, the owner stands up and proves that they are going to be a good neighbor. When the signs went up and the neighbors first contacted Planning and Zoning Office, we were told the owners were requesting property for rezoning of a parking lot. Neighbors were a little skeptical on this idea of why, when there's plenty of parking as we drive by and see it. Why spend the money when there's really no investment? So additional spots could be seen like I talked about. And if they need it more, they could clean up the trailers, get the boats out of there, and, you know, you're going to gain another eight to 10 spots. During a call to Planning and Zoning this week, neighbors were told that the current owner submitted a plan to build apartments on this parcel. The initial communication was not transparent, even though the owner can build more units, and we know that. In the neighbor's opinion, this needs to be rejected, and the owner of the rental complex needs to show his commitment to being a good neighbor. Clean up the property, put in trees or berms to obstruct a view and noise of the complex, replace the fence, close the north gate, and clean up the trailer of junk cars and get them out of the lot. There are currently up to 40, approximately 40 vehicles going in and out of the complex with more units, more vehicles will be speeding down a two-block street. We need to see a plan to address these concerns, which now we have seen a tentative plan as well. On behalf of the residents from Doodler and Melanie Lane, we respectfully request the rezoning of 1624 Doodler Drive be rejected at this time. Thank you.
Thanks, Kyle. Any questions? Any comments? It seems like a lot of the things you want cleaned up are taken care of with an apartment building and the fencing and the berm and the parking lot.
It actually could be. The concern is now we have one driveway, and now we're going to have another parking lot, so you're going to have additional cars for parking and for the tenants. Now you're going to put that on a two-block street, so the traffic's only going to get worse. And noise, I don't know how you're going to do that with the berms and that. You know, we have Hy-Vee there, who has done the berms and some of the other things, too. It's just, obviously, it's very close. The house to the north, directly to the north of that parking lot, is going to be right there. I mean, I'm directly across the street from that and one house down, and like I say, you can hear right now the parking, the noises, et cetera, from the cars. So I don't know how high the berm's going to be, trees, I mean, we don't know this stuff.
Do you want to comment on that, Jason, to the berm and the trees?
Yeah, along that north side with this particular parking lot and the rezoning, they would be required a Level A buffer yard, which gives them the option of a 2-foot berm or 4-foot screen fence, plus 20 units of landscaping per 100 lineal feet. So they would have to provide something along that lines. They are required a 2-foot berm or a 4-foot screen fence along that north side. 2-foot berm or a 4-foot screen fence, yep.
Thank you. Are there any other questions for Kyle?
Pat, how many times?
Kyle.
I'm sorry?
Kyle.
Kyle.
That's close.
My apologies.
It's fine.
My apologies.
It's fine.
On behalf of the neighbors, how many complaints have been called in to the police about speeding and noise and so forth?
You know, I'll be honest with you, we haven't called in a lot on the speeding because by the time we call, it's two blocks. What are we going to do? What are the officers, what are the police, what are they going to do? We've called multiple times, we've had vehicles ticketed there, and, you know, we have done that. We have had, the accident was turned in. So I do know that someone did some research on, down at the city and checked on the reports, and they basically said we don't see anything. But yes, we have called for the parking and some of the other things. Now, I don't know if that answers your question.
It does, thank you. They can't fix it if they don't know it's broken, I guess is my point there, but you're saying you've done that.
Well, we agree with that, and we've always talked about that. What are we going to do? We've had police in there, call us and let us know.
Sure. Now, with regard to these pictures, the ones where multiple vehicles are on the street, these are tenants of the apartment complex that's there already.
Right.
So adding parking spaces would be a good thing, perhaps?
It could be, but, you know, I guess when you're looking at the parking spaces on some of those things there is, obviously, you know, if they're cleaning out, you know, there's a lot on the roads, but the, once they're on the roads and the spaces are all cleaned out, the cars will sit on the neighborhoods, you know, streets for a long time. So, I don't know.
Against that, too, as long as people know about the problems.
Exactly.
Okay, well, thank you for your elaboration there.
Thank you. Anything else? Did anybody else want to comment?
Good evening. Robert Wallner Jr. at 1612 Doodler Drive, and I just want to expand a little bit on Kyle's comments. I live across the street from Kyle. And Doodler Drive, again, is a little over two blocks long, and it's very short. The exit that is on the left side of the drawing, if you have it on your computers, that slopes downward to the north. Cars come out of that exit with momentum and speed down the two-block little racetrack in front of our homes. And we can't document how many times this happens. We're frequently doing yard work, and we see the speeders go by and go down like this, and, you know, sometimes it helps, and sometimes it doesn't. We need a slow sign or a speed limit sign in the neighborhood.
So I'll stop you there, Jay. Where would be a good place for them to go to ask for that? A slow sign or a speed limit sign from either Jeff, Jason, whoever wants to answer that?
Well, any kind of those traffic concerns would be handled through engineering and the traffic engineer, and I believe that's the email that we provided with you from Shannon Austin, who is one of the traffic engineers who's looked into this area when Diane asked her, or sent her the email from the neighbors.
So she would be a great place to go, if that's what you're going to look for?
Yeah, I'm just voicing that concern. And I echo Kyle's that we need some better cleanup. But several years ago, I refer to the incident Kyle discussed. My son was standing in the yard, and about 10, 15 minutes later, a car lost control, ran onto my property. And if my son would have been there before, if he had been there 15 minutes later, he would have been gone. And that was witnessed by other kids in the neighborhood. They called the police, there's a report on that. We also see a lot of illegally parked trailers and trucks that, one time, there's a semi-truck. One particular trailer is about 40 feet long, a wired trailer, I'm not sure what type it was, full of 40 feet of full pallets. I realize this is a working guy, and he's getting home at the end of the day with a load, and he leaves it on the street. So what if a high school kid goes to school, comes to an after-school activity, and comes driving around a block, doesn't see that trailer, hits the back of it, gets hurt, gets injured? Wasn't there this morning, why would it be there now? If I'm 16, why would it be there now? And so those are some of the things that we're real concerned about. And then the increase in the number of cars is a real concern. Now I see a new exit being proposed that's right adjacent to the home, to the south of my home. And I'm not real confident that that will be a positive outcome. And so really to have a berm that's only 2 to 4 feet high will, I'm not sure how far the parking lot will be.
32 feet.
32 feet from the home?
From the property line, so 40 feet from the home.
I'm sorry?
32.3 feet from the property line? So it's farther than that from the home.
Oh, okay, so there'll be a 32-feet space between the parking lot and the next home.
And the property line.
Property line, yeah. Okay. There's a 10. Okay, that's, those are my concerns.
Thank you, Robert. Any questions for Robert? Thank you.
You, I appreciate it. We would just like to see a plan or something to address this, and we'll work on that.
Anybody else want to comment on item number five?
Hi, my name's Nick Tungay. I live at 1609 South Melanie Lane. And I guess I'm not real familiar with all the rules and regulations, but my concern is just the density of people. If we're going to add another apartment building, right now it seems like there's just a lot of stuff there, a lot of traffic, and I guess if it's legal and it's something we have to do, we have to do it, but it doesn't seem like if we're going to put a 21,000-square-foot apartment building there and all the people that come with that, that adding a few parking spaces over there is going to handle that amount of space. So, you know, I guess I'm real concerned about what the plan is there, too.
And, you know, and tonight we're more talking about the parking lot because the building can go there without any additions or changes.
Okay. Well, that's something, that's amazing to me. I just, this is such a nice area and the potential for that green space, but I guess if that's how it's zoned and that's how it works, it's how it works, so you guys have us there, so thanks.
Thanks, Nick. Eric, look like you want to say something?
Just a response, I think this is an attempt to try and solve some of these problems, to add some additional parking. As Jason indicated, then the majority of this property is already zoned RA1, and this project can move forward. We're just trying to clean this up, trying to, you know, with a project like this, Shake Places kicks in, the berms, the trees, the buffer, hopefully this is a vast improvement. Like I said, we're just trying to clean this up. And certainly, another access point is subject to engineering's review, and if it's denied, we'll come up with a different plan.
Mr. Chair, is there, a lot of the concerns are overflowing garbage, cars being parked there. Is there anybody, a property manager, that resides there that these people can contact when they have some of those issues and concerns?
There certainly is, and certainly any complaints. And that, you know, there are trash enclosures, and then there would be required additional trash enclosures and those things. Zoning enforcement certainly can address those issues. People parking on the street, I mean, we're trying to add some parking to alleviate that, but I'm sorry, that's legal. We're trying to improve this situation, I think with Shake Places, with the buffering that's going to be required. I think we're trying to alleviate this problem, and yes, that existing tennis court is in disrepair, it needs to be removed. It's not really being used for tennis. And want to clean that up and try and improve this neighborhood.
I think, Eric, they're a little frustrated because it appears to be a pattern of letting things languish and not get taken care of, and I think the tennis court is probably evident to that. And unfortunately, or fortunately, for whatever reason, being a bad neighbor does not disallow you from being able to rezone your parcel of property. I think there are a large number of neighbors here from that neighborhood, and I think it would behoove you to let the property owner know that, you know, he does, he has a beautiful neighborhood there and very familiar with that street, and obviously what attracts tenants to that apartment. And he needs to do his share to carry the load to keep it that way. Let's hope that they continue to encourage those tenants. Yes, it's legal to park on the street, we know that, but to use the parking spaces and obviously to maybe clean up the parking lot with those that shouldn't be there for an extended period of time. We are here to discuss the rezoning of the parking lot, and I think we'll have some discussion among us about that. But I think it, like I say, if you could convey to the property owners the frustration that some long-term neighbors have in that property, it'd probably be very helpful.
I understand, Jesse. I think, we hear that, and I think this is an attempt to try and remedy that problem.
Thank you.
Thank you.
One other quick question. In addition to this lot that's being rezoned, it looks like, are there going to be additional spaces to the west of the proposed apartment building? Or on my photograph, it looks like it's green space, or some of it may be green space?
There's some green space now, and, yeah, we're trying to provide additional parking, off-street parking, and this is an attempt to do that. Obviously, we maintain the setbacks that are required and would need to screen on those sides that are adjacent to residential, as Shake Places has implemented with that new ordinance, so. I think it's a win-win.
Thank you. Thanks, Eric. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else want to comment on item five?
29.
If not, I'll look for commission action.
Motion to approve for discussion.
Second. A motion and a second. Discussion time.
I'm listening to the neighbors, it's very reminiscent of some experience we had in the neighborhood we used to live in with the traffic and speed, kids having fun, cranking their stereos, putting those mufflers on four-cylinder cars that frankly I think are just, they're not sounding tough with them, but they must, I think they do. Any case, there's mediums to pursue that, and we constantly did with, you know, police. They can only be there so often, they can only set up so many speed enforcement traps and such like that, but you got to do those things or they don't necessarily know there's a problem, so.
I agree, Kurt.
Yeah, I would just encourage the neighbors, I appreciate you very much coming out tonight and expressing your concerns. We are a land use body, and that's what we deal with about, does it make sense to rezon this piece of property that really is, it's just not zoned properly? So it truly is a housekeeping item, but I appreciate the concerns that have been brought to light. I encourage them to continue to work with Shawna in the engineering office if every single one of you have to call her or send her an email to request, you know, maybe a slow sign. There doesn't appear to be an overabundance of accidents, but I can appreciate that people are picking up speed coming out of that driveway on the north side, and you do have some concerns. It's a beautiful neighborhood, a lot of, you know, long and It's a beautiful neighborhood, a lot of, you know, long existing homes, well-groomed, well-manicured. And it's, it's a nice neighborhood and we should do everything we can to support them in getting some of their frustrations taken care of.
Thanks, Jesse. Anybody else care to comment?
And I want to just, Jesse put it out very well. And being a good neighbor, bad neighbor, it looks like there's gonna be another two-story apartment. By not rezoning this, you've taken away thirty parking spaces. They're gonna, they can build the apartment complex without this. So if we don't rezone it, there's thirty more cars parked on the street. And to me, this is a good housekeeping item also, like they said before. But just because you're a bad neighbor and we do, Eric, like I said, encourage you to make sure that the owner knows about this and tries to get everything cleaned up and stuff. So.
And actually, Steve, I think it affects only the six parking spaces at the north side of that lot. The rest of the lot is already on RE1.
I think there's fourteen there.
Isn't there?
Yep.
Well, I thought the, the rezoning is just the northern portion of that, correct?
Well, yeah, most, it's most of those parking spots though, I think.
The majority of this rezone appears to be buffer.
Any other commission discussion? Now we'll take action. All in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
I'll oppose, same sign. Item five carries. We'll move on to item number nine.
Item nine is an ordinance of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota, amending the 2013 Shape Places zoning ordinance of the city of Sioux Falls.
Jason Bieber again with Planning Staff. This is amendment to our Shape Places zoning ordinance, which was, became effective on April sixteen of two thousand fourteen. Based upon its implementation and development projects, cer- certain sections of this ordinance need to be revised in order to be addressed, or, excuse me, in order to be addressed correctly. These revisions do not change the intent of the ordinance, however, more grammatical and the ease of use of citizens of Sioux Falls. Just give you a couple of the highlights of what we're proposing tonight. The majority of it is just reorganizing, clarifying, and updating some of the buffer yards and bulk regulations for six or seven forms. We are proposing to eliminate the full-service restaurant spacing requirement in the RE six form, which is utilized in a village or the downtown planned unit developments. This, and this will also make it, this more consistent with on and off-sale alcohol within this form. They currently do not have any spacing requirements. We are adding a couple of specific forms to the pedestrian-oriented planned unit development. And those are the RE five, which is a retail form to allow above seventy-five thousand square feet, and also the MD three, which is apartment residential high-density forms. Within this pedestrian-oriented PUD, we feel, feel that some of these developments need to utilize some of these forms to make the pedestrian connections and everything work. So we feel like they will go well with this specific PUD. We are also adding an additional requirement to initial development plans that addresses pedestrian connections and pathways. We would like some additional regulations to make sure that these pedestrian connections and pathways are shown on their final development plans prior to building permit issuance. And if they're not similar or substantially the same as what was shown on the initial development plan, requiring them to go back to amend their initial development plan. And then we're also modifying some screening of dumpsters and outdoor storage section. This is, this is to change the ordinance to make it a little bit more easy and consistent with what the zoning department does for enforcement. And then finally, we are editing some of the buffer yard requirements. We have found applicants wanting the ability to provide a screen fence instead of the berm. And we've had several alternative site plans come through to, to eliminate the berm requirement and allow a screen fence. So we've decided that that might be something, just to allow them the option to do a screen fence instead of the berm. And then I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have on any of the proposed amendments.
Thanks, Jason. Anybody have questions? I have a comment. I mean, this is what we told people that we were gonna be doing as we moved forward with Shape Places, that it was fix it when it needs to be fixed instead of waiting thirty years before you get something new. So I appreciate you guys working through the process of getting this done.
Thank you.
I couldn't agree more, Nick. I think clearly on, you know, it's, it's just been a few months since it's been fully enacted. And some of our big first things that we did is talk about these screening requirements. And I think it'll, you know, it's great that people don't have to pay the petition to come down and just, you know, it's just all part of it. So I, I think, let's get it done and fix it up and keep moving.
Thanks, Jesse. Thanks, Jason. Anybody else want to comment on item number nine? I will look for commission action. Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Oppose, same sign. Item nine carries. Item ten.
Item ten is nineteen sixty, twenty fourteen, rezone from the RD one twin-home duplex residential to the C two commercial neighborhood and streetcar district for allowed forms located at forty-eight oh five East Linden Lane.
Good evening. Diane Decoyer with Planning and Building Services. The project before you is a request to rezone point seven-four acres from the RD one twin-home duplex residential district to the C two commercial neighborhood and streetcar district for allowed forms. The applicant is Gerald Berg. The property is located at forty-eight oh five East Linden Lane, which fronts East Arrowhead Parkway to the north and South Gordon Drive to the east. Mr. Berg also rezoned the property to the west here a couple of months ago, in which his request was approved. The property currently has a home on it, which the applicant intends to remove for development with future retail development on this site. The applicant will be required to provide a Level C buffer yard on the south and east sides of the property. This buffer yard includes a thirty-foot setback with a four-foot-high berm and forty units of landscaping per one hundred lineal feet. The buffer yards are required to alleviate any potential incompatibilities and help provide the proper transitions between commercial and residential uses. The north and west sides are adjacent to commercial property. Therefore, buffer yards are not required. The comprehensive plan shows this, this site to be a developed area and previously zoned as commercial. Testimony during the hearing tonight should shape the decision of these zoning matters because the subject application is consistent with the Shapes Sioux Falls comprehensive plan. Approval of this rezone would be acceptable. I can answer any questions you might have.
Thanks, Diane. Were there any questions? Thank you. If the applicant is here, would you please come up?
My name is Jerry Berg and I currently own both those pieces of property. I had purchased the first one on the corner that's got the square around it a number of years ago as a commercial piece of property and then Shaping Places changed it all. So in an effort to put them, you know, coagulate the whole thing, put them together, I purchased the one on the west and now just to get it as one piece of, you know, property, trying to get it back to commercial. So.
Thanks, Jerry. Anybody have questions for him? All right. Thank you. Did anybody in the audience want to comment on item ten? If not, we'll look for commission action.
Move approval.
Have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Mr. Chairman, this, to me at least, parallels very much what has been happening on West Forty-first Street over the last several years, where many, many residences have succumbed, if that's the word, to commercial development. And I see that happening out in this area more and more since the advent of the Walmart and the, the other new shopping areas out there. So this is an inevitable step and I see no problem in doing it.
Thanks, Danny. Any other discussion? All in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Oppose, same sign. Item ten carries.
Item eleven, nineteen sixty-seven, twenty fourteen, rezone from the RS Single Family Residential Suburban and RD one twin-home duplex residential suburban to the C two commercial neighborhood and streetcar district for allowed forms located at five oh four and six oh four South Hillview Road.
And item eleven has been asked to be withdrawn from the applicant. Do we have to take any action on that? No? All right. Then we'll move on to item twelve.
Item twelve, twenty sixty.
Hold on, Stella. It looks like we have.
There's a couple of us, oh, sorry. There's a couple of us here from about the item eight. We were just wondering where we can find out some information about, you know, what they're gonna do with that property that is south of the railroads and...
I think Jeff is...
Yep, Jeff can tell you right there.
Thank you.
Yep. All right, item twelve.
Item twelve, twenty sixty, twenty fourteen, conditional use permit for the RE one form to allow drive-through facilities or stacking of motor vehicles located at sixty-five oh one West Forty-first Street.
Diane Decoyer, Planning and Building Services. This project before you is a request for a conditional use permit on point five acres in the O Office District with an RE one form for limited retail and services and a drive-through facility. The applicant is Ryan Tisdale with Lloyd Companies and the owner is Chuck Gustafson. The property is located at sixty-five oh one West Forty-first Street and it is on the east portion of the property, which is a vacant lot. The owner is proposing to build a four thousand square foot retail building. Approximately thirteen hundred square feet of it will be occupied by a tenant for retail service with a drive-through, speakers, and a menu board. The use here is considered to be compatible with the neighborhood, excuse me, the neighborhood character and be cited and designed in such a way as to minimize the impact on adjacent residential uses. Because the proposed use on the east portion of the property will be a retail building and the west portion business, the owner will be subdividing the property for two separate forms. A Level A buffer yard is required to the south, adjacent to residential property that requires a ten-foot setback with a two-foot berm or a four-foot fence. Twenty units of landscaping for each one hundred lineal feet is also required within the buffer yard. For safety concerns, the owner has also agreed to provide a six-foot-high fence between the drive-through and the apartments to the south to minimize pedestrians from jumping the fence to access Forty-first Street. A Level B buffer yard is also required with a fifteen-foot setback with a two-foot-high berm and thirty units of landscaping on the east side of the property where adjacent to the RE one zoning district to the east. Because the applicant has provided clarity to indicate the location, nature, and extent of the work proposed, staff recommends approval for this conditional use permit. And I can answer any questions you might have.
Thanks, Diane. Are there any questions for Diane? Thank you. Is the applicant here?
Ryan Tisdall from Lloyd Companies, one oh one South Reed.
Thanks, Ryan. Anything you want to add to Diane's report?
Nope, she pretty much covered it. Do you have any questions?
Any questions for Ryan?
I don't suppose there's any chance to know what coffee tenant is being referred to.
That's West Siders want to know.
That's Oscars.
We're gonna Braga some tonight. It's midnight for some coffee.
You think you're gonna have enough driveway there with that high school right across the street?
I think it'll be popular.
All right, thanks, Ryan.
Thank you.
Anybody else care to comment on item twelve? Then we'll look for commission action.
Make a motion to approve item twelve.
A second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion other than asking for coffee?
We don't ask for much, so.
All in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Oppose, same sign. Item twelve carries.
Item thirteen, twenty fifty-nine, twenty fourteen, alternative site plan for the WM one form to provide an alternative buffer yard located at eighty-one oh one West Twelfth Street.
Jason Bieber again with Planning Department. This is an application by Daniel Asop. The purpose is the applicant would like to provide a six-foot-high screen fence instead of the two-foot berm and four-foot fence as required in the Level C buffer yard along the south portion of this lot, adjacent to the single-family residential. It is located at eighty-one oh one West Twelfth Street. The alternative plan is for the Level C buffer yard requirement along the south side of the property, adjacent to the future DD two forms. The submitted plan does indicate the required number of landscape units and setbacks. However, a six-foot screen fence is indicated along the south property line instead of the two-foot berm. The applicant indicates that the required berm would impede drainage flow along the southern portion of this lot. Therefore, he would rather provide a six-foot fence and feels that that would provide the same or a better alternative to the two-foot berm and four-foot fence. The proposed buffer yard element should provide an adequate screen from the buildings to the adjacent DD two forms to the south. And because the application has provided clarity to indicate the location, nature, and extent of the work proposed and the proposed buffer yard landscaping should adequately buffer the property, staff does recommend approval of this alternative site plan. And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thanks, Jason. Any questions?
Yes, Jason. On that south side, you know, you talked about the drainage and I see under drainage commentary here, they didn't have any. Will they be reviewing how much water would be flowing across the property line to those DD two forms to the south as part of their normal process for approval for the site plan?
Yes, they have looked at this quite a bit because we've been going through this one for about a, probably about a year. It was annexed into the city. Drainage was looked at it at that time. They platted the property, was looked at, you know, at that time. And now they are coming in for their building permit, which drainage will look at too. So they've, they've been in constant contact with Andy over in the drainage department.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you. Is the applicant here?
Sure is. Happy Christmas. Happy New Year. Danny, it's up eighty-one oh one West Twelfth Street. Jason wrapped it up. The concern is just the drainage from the homes to the south. You put a berm there, they're gonna get water in the backyard, so just let it go through and then it drains off down into my retention pond. Six-foot fence makes more sense. Any other questions?
Thank you, Dan. Any questions for him?
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else care to comment on item thirteen? All right, we'll look for commission action.
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion?
Well, I think this is a clear case of why we need to make some changes to the ordinance. We could have saved the ASAP some time and expense and, sorry, you didn't wait another month, but it's gotta get through the council. So, but... Good, maybe you could talk in favor of it then at the council meeting.
There you go.
But yeah, I think obviously this is a no-brainer. We would be doing harm to not, not do something like this to handle the drainage. So. That's above my pay grade.
Any other discussion? All in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Oppose, same sign. Item thirteen carries. On to item fourteen, the election of officers. We need a motion, just as Jeff walked in. Don't all speak up at once.
Motion asking Andy Anderson to be our chair for next year.
Do you have a vice chair in mind? Should we do it all at once or do you want to do it separate?
Vice chair by the name of Stephen Gaspard.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Lots of people in favor of that.
Everybody's seconding because it's not their names out there.
We're wrong.
You learn really quick. If you make the motion, you're not it. Any discussion other than I think that's a very good motion? All in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries.
I want to thank you, Mr. Chairman, for your year of service. You've done a great job.
My pleasure. Thank you.
And you won't be, you won't be missed because you're still gonna be here with us.
Yeah, I'm right over there.
I quit giggling at the gavel.
Yeah.
I didn't giggle tonight at the gavel.
I make a motion to adjourn.
All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
We are adjourned.